I now call the Monday, April 12, 2021 meeting of the Planning and Zoning Commission to Order. Would you please stand for the invocation led by Chaplain Gary Walker, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance, which will be led by Vice Chair Larry Rankin.
Heavenly Father, we give you all the praise and all the honor and all the glory, Lord, and ask that you be here tonight with this meeting and watch over with the Planning and Zoning Commissioners on the agenda, and give them wisdom and discernment and all of the people that are involved. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the fire of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation unto God, indivisible, with liberty and justice.
Thank you. Can we get a roll call, please?
Commissioner Rutherford. Commissioner Musara.
Here.
Commissioner Roberts.
Here.
Commissioner Griffiths.
Present.
Commissioner Laney.
Here.
Vice Chairperson Rankin.
Here.
And Chairperson Zercher.
Here.
This time, is there a motion to approve the minutes from the March 8, 2021 meeting?
I'll make that motion.
Is there a second?
Second.
If it's moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Minutes approved. Number six announcements, any announcements from staff? All right, well, I'll go ahead and just read my normal opening statement here. Good evening, my name is Matt Zercher, and I'm the Chairperson of the Planning and Zoning Commission. I'll be presiding over this evening's deliberations of the Planning and Zoning Commission. The Planning and Zoning Commission sits in advisory capacity to the Town Council and reviews planning and zoning issues and forwards recommendations regarding these important issues to the council. The Commission is bound by specific regulations and guidelines for considering applications, and there are also a surprising number of things the Commission cannot take into consideration when reviewing an application. Finally, members of the Commission are volunteers and not paid employees. We donate our time for the betterment of the town. This evening's proceedings will be conducted using the following format. First, I'll read the hearing application into the record. Once the application has been read into the record, staff will present the case and the recommendations to the Commission. Members of the Planning and Zoning Commission will then direct any questions they have regarding the application to staff. After the Commission completes its initial review of the application, the applicant will have an opportunity to comment regarding the matter and answer any questions. After the applicant has completed their comments, I will open the floor to general comments from the public regarding the current application being discussed. Under verse seven, under public hearing items, we have zoning map change 21-001 upon the application of bungalows on Market Street LLC, owner and RV1 Architecture and Planning Agent, a request for zoning map change from C2PAD Commercial General Sales and Services Planned Area Development to RSPAD Residential and Services Planned Area Development on approximately 11.2 acres located at the southwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive. We're also, at the same time, we will hear under, I remember, eight for action items, preliminary development plan 21-002 upon the application of bungalows on Market Street LLC, owner and RV1, I, excuse me, not one, RV1, Architecture and Planning Agent, a request for preliminary development plan for the bungalows on Market Street comprising up to 112 leased single-family, single-story detached and duplex dwelling units on approximately 11.2 acres located at the southwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive. Presenting this evening is Planner Ed Packard. Ed, take it away.
Thank you, Chairman, and members of the Commission. This is a rezoning and preliminary development plan application for the property at southwest corner of Market Street and Great Western Drive. The rezoning request is from C2PAD to RSPAD for the multifamily residential units as you described. The, to get right into it, I'll try to keep this brief. There are three types of units proposed in this, and they may look familiar because this is done by Cavan Development, which is also entitled, and they're going to go into construction very soon, for the project at the corner, the southeast corner of, northeast corner of 169 and Highway 69. Same concept of leased multifamily, single detached units. There will be 32 units of 676 square feet, units of one bedroom. Those one-bedroom units will be duplexes, they'll be attached to each other, but the two-bedroom and the three-bedroom units will be standalone by themselves. The parking is outlined in the table there with 220 proposed spaces where the 217 is required. I did talk to members of the Commission, had some questions, and it seems like some of the biggest questions were the entrance and the exit. Here's the site plan. And the, we use the preliminary landscape plan because it kind of shows the driveways the best outlined on there with the one proposed driveway onto Market Street. I think I mentioned in the staff report that typically two driveways are required to points of egress, but they will be fire sprinkler, constructing fire sprinklers with the units, and so the fire department, this met the code requirement for the fire safety requirements for the units, and therefore only one entrance is required for this type One of the, I think it was mentioned in the staff report, but not in great detail, was the half-street improvements that we made to Market Street and to Great Western Drive. Right now, there is 60 feet of right-of-way, which is the complete dedication required, so there won't be any more right-of-way dedication, but there is kind of a temporary street there. It's about 25 feet in width. They will be developing the half-street improvements for those two streets, similar to what the apartments, the terraces up to the east, north, I'm sorry, the west, the northwest, the terraces built their half-street, and the half-streets for Market and Great Western will be similar. And those will be, let me write, what is proposed is a 20-foot, 21-foot, this is the half-street dimension, the 21 feet from the street center line to the back of curb. The, I'm not exactly sure where the existing street is constructed in the existing right-of-way, but most likely it's bisected by the street center line, so there will be additional pavement section there in addition to the half-street of 21 feet. So there will be essentially two drive lanes and another lane along the curb gutter that will allow parking along the street. It was mentioned that there's parking issues in that area because, with the terraces, I don't know why there's parking issues. I assume the site was built out in accordance with the requirements of the code with sufficient number of parking spaces, but for some reason, people are parking on the street. The parking issues may be that, let me back up here. Well, up here at the, use the mouse, the terrace is right up here, and so this Market Street kind of necks down to the 25-feet pavement width right here, so if they are parking along the sides there, it's going to get a little cramped. So when the street is constructed and built out, for at least the half-street improvements along there, there will be additional right-of-way, additional pavement for parking along the entire frontage of this site. Like I said, they've got three more spaces than required by code in the interior of the site. There was some discussion of an additional, putting an additional driveway onto Great Western Drive. I'll let the applicant address that. They're here and they can answer the There was another somewhat unique issue with this site, but it's also the same with the Cavan Development down at 69 and 169, in that the code requires, when there's no garages, the code requires a 50-square-foot space, storage requirement for each dwelling unit. Each one of these dwelling units will have an enclosed rear yard enclosed by a block, a six-foot block wall that will be, nobody can see through it, will provide some privacy space, and similar to what was proposed in the previous Cavan Development, we decided that this meets the intent of the code to provide for the storage, the minimum 50-square-foot storage space with each dwelling unit. So with that, staff has recommended approval with the stipulations outlined on page four. I'm here to take any questions, and also the applicant is here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you, Ed. Any questions from the Commission for staff?
Yes, Chairman, I have one. I'm still a little confused. So who is responsible for the eventual, for those two streets, Market and Great Western? Is it the?
The developer will construct the half-streets for the adjacent, Jason Street right-of-way.
Okay.
And they will do that with the construction of the site.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Mr. Chairman, I'm concerned about the single access. Every time we approve something with only one access, I worry about it a little more because every time we do it, it becomes easier to do it again, and there seems as there are always compelling reasons for doing the wrong thing, and I wonder if that's what we're doing here. That's a lot of people, potentially a lot of cars for one access in an emergency.
So if my math is correct, 112 times two, 224 additional potential cars, if you do two per unit. So, Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chairman. First of all, I do support Commissioner Rutherford in her concern with the one ingress and egress. I do have a question for Mr. Packard. It says that a traffic impact statement was completed for the project. When was that completed, and it's not in our package, and I'm just wondering if there were any mitigation requirements in that traffic study?
What was completed for the site is called a traffic impact statement, and it's like a traffic impact study, but it's very brief because it doesn't meet the traffic count threshold requirements that a full traffic study would require. So what it basically talks about, it studies the site and the expected trips, morning and evening, peak hour trips, that the site would generate. It also talks about the site distance that would be required for the access point on Market Street, so when they construct it, they can ensure that there's enough site visibility in each direction for traffic pulling in and out of the site. I did put into the staff report that there was going to be 53, this is in the, 53 trips in the AM peak hour and 65 trips in the PM peak hour with 806 total daily trips.
I couldn't get my fuzzy math brain wrapped around the 806 total daily trips. Is that 806 coming and going?
Yes, for the, through, for the entire day.
The traffic.
And I apologize, this was done on February 4 of this year.
That's an enormous amount of traffic coming out of that one ingress/egress moving around. I'm also not keen on adding the half-road for additional street parking. I mean, we shouldn't be allowing parking on our streets like that. It's too dangerous, and...
Well, the parking that's provided on the site is what's required by code, and that would be, that would be, it should be enough, yes. I'm just saying that there can be parking accommodated on the street, but the amount that's provided on-site is actually in excess of what's required by the zoning ordinance.
There were two different parking numbers, what was required and provided in the package.
Mm-hmm.
So which one is correct, please?
They're providing 220, and there's 217 required.
Okay. Then on another page in the packet, it said that 208 were required, and they were providing 216.
That might have been a mistake if I...
That was on page 15.
Of which document?
I'm sorry?
Page 15 of which document?
The big document with all the pages in it.
That's the developer's.
Oh, that's the developer's document?
Oh, and that was probably, I think, they made some revisions.
Okay.
That may have been from an earlier iteration of the site plan. I understand your concern about the 806 daily trips, but it's a multifamily development, it's pretty standard numbers. I mean, you're not going to get any more or less from any other type of development. They, when traffic engineers do these studies, they use multipliers and numbers that are accepted by the industry standard when they, for when they do these studies.
So they're saying there's 806 in and outs of that intersection every day?
Yes.
Thank you.
Any other commissioners?
I also want to share the concerns about the ingress/egress. My, also, a big concern of mine is adding the additional traffic to the tight-turn corner there at Great Western and Market. There is nothing in the packet that says what is going to be done there to mitigate the tight-turn rate, tight-turn there, and that is a big concern of mine. I definitely, you know, I can understand that half-street will allow, you know, a little bit more parking, but there's still going to be, I think, a visibility issue, you know, in getting out of there, and so, and I definitely, you know, those would be my three concerns, ingress/egress, I'd prefer to see another one, the intersection of Market and Great Western, and the parking issue. I mean, honestly, the terraces, you know, I don't know if they, when they were first approved, if they met all the code stuff, but there are too many people parking on Market Street, and I just, I just have concerns. It's a public, to me, it's public safety, and that always comes first.
I can't remember how many units are in the terraces, but I think it might be 200 to 300. It's significantly more, but I understand your concern. Okay. Any other questions of staff from the Commission? All right, seeing none. Thank you, Ed. I'll invite the applicant up. Would you please state your name for the record, sir?
Good evening, my name is Mark Reddy with RVI, 120 South Ash Avenue in Tempe, Arizona. Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, thank you for having me here today. I'll go ahead and address some of the comments that have come up, and then if you have further questions, I'm happy to answer them. So when we, first of all, Ed mentioned this is the second project in Prescott Valley that is this similar bungalow project. We've been doing this project all over the state of Arizona. We've designed over 20 of them around Arizona, most of them in the valley, but we've done them in Flagstaff and Prescott Valley as well, and this is one of the smallest ones that we've ever developed. Most of the projects are 200-plus units. Some of them are over 300 units. I think this might be the smallest one that we've developed just because of the size of the site being only 10 acres. So when we start these projects, we're always looking at the size of the project, the transportation system in the area, and this project has access on two collector roads, which is great. The site also has a 40-foot fall from west to east, so the site slopes pretty dramatically. And when you design a product like this where it's a cluster type of development, it's really hard to terrace the project within the site itself, so we typically deal with terracing on the edges. So we'll have retaining walls on the western side cutting into the site, and then we'll have fill on the eastern side elevating it, and I can talk about that if there's any questions about that. And when we first looked at the design before we looked at the topography, we were thinking that our entrance would be off of Great Western, and the problem is there's about a 20-to-24-foot elevation difference between our site and the road, the way that the engineering and the design works, and so our engineers were telling us that it was going to be extremely difficult, if it possible, to provide an access onto Great Western based on the design of the site and the topography and the constraints, and so we moved the entrance onto Market Street instead of Great Western. Most of the projects that we design that are substantially larger than this still only have one primary entry. When we get over 200 units, we typically do a secondary exit-only. That's an emergency access and an exit-only, but what we typically do with our primary entries is we make them wide enough with a center median in the middle, and you can see it from the site plan, that if one of those lanes gets blocked, you can convert the second lane into two-way traffic, and it's wide enough to accommodate for that. Coupling that with the fact that we sprinkle the buildings, the fire department, this meets the requirements for the fire department in terms of access. In terms of volumes of traffic, I understand a number of 800 sounds like a lot. Just not being a traffic guy myself, that seems like a lot of cars, but when you look at, when you spread that out over the day and you look at the peak hours, in the PM peak, there will be 41 cars within an hour coming into the site. That's about one car every 87 seconds. Not a lot of traffic. The numbers sound bigger than they are, but when you think about one car coming in every 87 seconds, that's not that much traffic, and that's how much is coming into the site during the peak hour, so that's the maximum number during the highest volume trips, and then in the AM, when people are leaving, it's very similar. There's 41 cars leaving during the peak hour within one hour, so again, that's one car every 87 seconds. Now, there may be three or four coming in at one time, but on average, over an hour, it's 41 cars, so these projects really don't generate that much traffic. I know that the apartment complex just up the road, I don't know what the unit count is, but I know it's substantially larger than this one. This is a very small complex. These are all detached units. That, we drove through that before we came here today, and it's a very large project. It's very, very tight in there, and so we're not going to have parking problems with this project. I don't know what their parking ratio was on the other one, but I can tell you that having designed and built several of these, what we've been able to determine is that regardless of what the city's parking requirements are, we know exactly what we need to accommodate for our residents. This is a gated community, and our project doesn't work if our customers can't park inside the gates. And so what we found in experience and having built several of these is that what we need in order to serve our residents is one parking space per bedroom, so for a one-bedroom, it's one space, for a two-bedroom, it's two spaces, and for a three-bedroom, it's three spaces. Now, that's average. That doesn't mean that one one-bedroom unit might not have two drivers, but it also means that some of the three-bedroom units might only have two drivers or even one driver, so when we average it out, we find that what we need to accommodate all of the traffic and parking within our project is one parking space per bedroom, and that's been proven in several different projects that we've built over the state of Arizona. Every single unit has one dedicated parking space that's reserved specifically for their unit, and that's shaded, and then the remainder of them are visitor parking spaces that are open to anybody. So we feel very confident, based on our history and our experience in having built several of these, that we are fully adequately parked at the numbers that we have, I think it's 220 units, based on the formulas that we've developed. Now, it just so happens to exceed the town's requirements. Some towns, some cities require more and less, and we always meet the requirements, but sometimes we exceed them if it doesn't meet our internal standard. In this case, we're actually complying with both. We're complying with the town standard, and we're meeting our individual standard. So hopefully that addresses the access and the parking. In terms of the turn on the corner, right now, this is a very narrow two-lane road that's not designed to standard. It's a temporary accessway. When we build our half-street, we're going to be doing the full half-street improvements, putting in curb, gutter, sidewalk, paving, and all of that, putting in the proper turning radiuses based on the town standard. We're also going to be required to meet all the site visibility requirements in terms of access and visibility in and out of not only the entry, but also at the corner. All of those things are required by the town in the code, and we will be complying with all of those. So I understand now, I drove there just a little bit ago, and it is kind of a tight, awkward turn. When we make our improvements, that's going to improve substantially because we're on the inside of that curve, so the radius curves on the corner is going to be much wider, so fire trucks and other vehicles can easily manipulate that turn, which doesn't exist today, so we will be improving that as well. I think, hopefully, I addressed those. If there's any follow-up questions or if you have other questions, I'm happy to try to answer them as best I can. Thank you.
With your entryway, as I'm concerned about your finished grade, as I drove up the street when you're about where your entry is, and then you look back towards this property, that property's probably already 10 to 15 feet below the street as it is today, so not knowing what your finished grade is going to be, I would think that if you had an up-entry, I'm going to say an up-entry, from the property, if the main level is below the street level to come up, that that would make the entrance, the egress and entrance even a little tougher for being able to see in both directions.
I'm listening. I'm just looking at our grading plan.
No, and I, and because with the 40 feet, I guess my concern when I saw that is depending on where your finished grade is going to be, that area, I mean, most of the, most of the drop is from the northwest corner to the south-southeast corner.
Right.
And depending on where your grade is, you're going to have, in the back, on the south and southeast side, it's going to be way up there.
Right.
And you've only got basically 20 feet if I'm, our maps are really tiny, and my, I got my cheaters, but they don't work that, all that great.
Right.
So with only 20 feet, depending on what your grade is, especially along Great Western and then in the back, you're going to have some pretty good-sized banks because your footprint here pretty much covers the whole property. So I'm kind of concerned in talking with that entryway, where your finished grade is, is going to affect the views coming in and out, and then I'm concerned on the south or the east and south side as to how much fill you're going to have back there and how you're going to be able to handle those grades in a 20 feet, especially along Great Western where it's just 20 feet from the edge of the street to the back of your properties.
Right.
So I'm, that's a concern.
Sure, and let me address that, Mr. Chairman, Vice Chair. So I just looked at the grading plan, and the grades at the street are 5315, and the grades at the far end of our driveway are 5312. So there's only a three-foot difference between the street and where our driveway starts as it turns into that throat, and the reason is because we're basically, what we're doing is we're cutting the west half of the site and we're filling the east half of the site. So by our entry being kind of right in the middle, as we balance the site out, we're actually pretty well aligned with the elevation of that road. As that road's coming down and meeting with our entryway, there's a three-foot difference.
And that's good. So on the east side, what's the, what's the finished grade of Great Western?
So on the east side, finished grade is 5325, and our closest building is 5313. So it's about 12 feet of difference, and so what we're doing, and I've got some cross-sections, basically what we're proposing along Great Western is, you know, a lot of these projects, the apartment complex that you're talking about to the north, they have one huge massive kind of retaining wall. What we're proposing is a step system where no retaining wall is higher than six feet, so we would have, it would start at a single retaining wall on Great Western, and it would go to, up to a triple retaining go to, up to a triple retaining wall at the highest point, and then back down to a double or a single retaining wall. So, we'd have a six-foot retaining wall, a six-foot landing area, another retaining wall, a landing area, and then our site.
So, then, in your landscaping, where you've got a lot of trees and shrubbery and so forth on that east side, is also going to be involved in that.
Yeah, so, as we step up that retaining wall, there'll be landscaping. Our retaining walls are a minimum of six feet apart, and they don't exceed six feet in height. So, instead of having one big 20-foot retaining wall, there'll be smaller, short ones with vegetation in between them, planted in those areas in between. So, it'll look a lot nicer than just having one big wall that's cut into the site. It'll be terraced. And that was one of the reasons that we couldn't put the road on Great Western, is it was just too big of a variation in the elevations between our finished grade and the street. But when we moved it to Market Street, because the road's coming down and our site is being split, we were able to line it up. So, it works out from a visibility and an access standpoint.
So, you're confident that you're going to have enough fill coming out of that northwest corner to level out the whole property?
We're going to need to import some fill.
Yeah.
We know that. In fact, my client was saying, "If you know anybody that's got dirt, let us know, because we want to buy it." So, we're going to need more dirt. I don't know that, I'm not the civil engineer, but I talked to our civil this morning, and he said, "We are going to have to import some fill, because we're going to have to fill a little bit more than we cut." But they'll just have to, you know, they'll have to figure out how to.
So, then, in the northwest corner there, which is along Market Street, when you drop that area there, you're going to, again, have a pretty good bank coming off the street. Is that within your property, then? Will you need to terrace that also?
Yeah, it looks like there's only, at the northwest corner, it looks like there'll be a single retaining wall. It'll turn into a double and then go back to a single. So, there'll be, it'll kind of step. But again, in all of our retaining walls, we're not doing anything taller than six feet. So, it'll kind of, it'll kind of get taller and then drop back down again. But it looks like at the corner on this plan, now, we haven't done the final construction documents yet, so what we've done now is all conceptual, but it looks like there'll be a single retaining wall. It'll convert to a double, and then it goes back to a single and almost back to grade when you get to the entry.
So, that, and you mentioned it in your, the north-to-south drainage there, where the two big culverts come out, that's kind of cut in there, that's not on your property?
It comes into our property, and we will have a drainage easement. So, basically, the water comes in, and then along our western boundary, we have an additional setback for our buildings so that we can accommodate a drainage easement. So, the drainage easement will run along our western property line. It'll kind of curve back around the south, and then it'll.
Because there's kind of a bar ditch there now.
It'll exit at its existing location where it drains out.
But when you cut that, that bar ditch is going to be up here, and your level's going to be down here.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. So, I don't know how that transition is going to work. That's really for our civil engineers to figure out, but there is a drainage easement that will be coming. And the drainage easement might be above, I don't know if it's going to be above our pads or below. I'm not sure exactly how that fits, but that hasn't been fully designed yet. But that's the intent, is that that drainage will come along that western edge, and then it'll start to curve east, and then it'll outflow in the current location that it outflows today, which is the requirement that we have to meet.
And as a follow-up to that, I noticed on the very south, in the center there, there's a retention area that you have.
Yes.
So, since you can't affect the property to the south of you, when the water comes into that retention area, where will the overflow of that go?
I don't, I think, I don't know this 100% for sure, but I think that retention is retaining onsite and will percolate into the soils. I don't think there's any spillover of that. I think it's just meeting.
Yeah, because at that point, you're going to, there's going to be a lot of fill underneath that.
Yeah, I think it's just meeting the capacity needs of the site. I'm not 100% sure of that, but I'm pretty sure that was the intent, was that that is meeting the capacity, because it looks like it's coming from the parking lot, and there's a pipe that brings it down. So, that would be just retaining the water that's generated onsite for the typical storm events that occur. And so, that doesn't, that's not like an off-site, it doesn't continue off-site. It basically is stored there until it either evaporates or percolates into the soil.
So, Ed, as included in this is that those retaining walls and how that finished grade and how this is all going to work, that's not something that comes back through us? That's something that goes through you or in the town? Okay, so, at this point, it's not a worry to us, even though it's a worry to me, it's not a, I mean, it's not something that is going to affect, we're going on the fact that when the final plan comes in, that everything will meet proper codes and everything that you need, and the drainage will be handled properly. Thank you. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Any other commissioners? Commissioner Griffiths?
Thank you, Chairman. Wow, Engineer Larry, you were awesome. Mr. Reddy, welcome.
Thank you.
What made you pick this location for this project?
Well, I didn't pick it. My client picked it.
Right. What made them do that?
But they've been very excited about the Prescott Valley market. My client has owned the Prescott Valley Crossing property for about 20 years. If you're familiar with that one, it's off of 69 and 169. And over the years, they've grappled with what to do with that property. They originally had a plan for commercial. There really wasn't the market there. They've been concerned about it. They wanted to get something developed. And they've been doing these multifamily units in the valley for about five, six years now, and it has been wildly successful. And this is becoming kind of a national trend, these single-story detached rental units, and it's just exploding nationally. But it was really founded in Arizona, and I think CAVEN has recognized the need for this type of product in Prescott Valley, and so, they were looking for a second site. And through their research and working with their brokers, they found this property and thought it was a perfect location for another community. So, it had utilities, it had infrastructure, it had the roadway access. I mean, obviously, we have to build it and improve it, but it seemed to be a really good location. We actually were looking at three different sites in this general area. There was a couple other ones that we were looking at, but the other ones, for various reasons, didn't work out, and this one seemed to work. And so, it's just in a great location, and they think if, you know, if we are able to get it approved, it'll be a very successful project for the community.
I commend them on their vision for bringing multifamily bungalows to the market. It is badly needed. We know that. We see it. I'm having trouble getting past the parking and the ingress and egress and the number of cars. The other item I have of concern, and I don't agree with it, is CAFMA allowing for sprinklers in those units to grant you the one ingress and egress. Are you planning on hooking these sprinklers up to a monitoring system, or you're just installing a sprinkler system, period?
That's a good question. I don't know, whatever we're doing, we're doing whatever the fire department code requires, the uniform fire code.
All they said were sprinklers, and there's no code to make residential hook up to monitoring.
Yeah, so, I don't know if they're hooked up to monitoring or not. I don't know the answer to that question. I could find out for sure. If it's part of the IFC, I think it's called International Fire Code, I think is what the town adopts, so it's not their own fire code. It's the International Fire Code, which is the kind of universal requirements. We're meeting whatever that requirement is for fire sprinklers, even though this product doesn't require it by code.
Correct.
The way the code works is it says if you exceed 100 units, you either need a second access for fire, or you need to sprinkler your buildings. And if you sprinkler your buildings, you can go up to 200 units with a single access point. So, whatever the code requires for sprinkler buildings is what we're going to be required to do. I just don't know if that requires monitoring or not.
So, would you be willing to give thought to have these units monitored? Because here's what I see is going to happen. Yes, each one of these units are going to have a riser room in them. They're going to have a sprinkler. These are rental units, is that correct?
Correct.
So, now, we've got families moving in and out. Maybe they'll be there for six months, maybe a year. So, Mom in the kitchen, with all the heat coming up, sets off the kitchen sprinkler. Has she been taught where the riser room is to turn the sprinkler off? Do we have a maintenance guy that knows how to turn the sprinkler off? That's a huge concern, and I would appreciate having it addressed. I would also want these units to be monitored. Most of our fire calls are not for fire. They're medical. So, putting in a sprinkler system right now as it stands isn't doing any good. All it's doing is allowing you one ingress and egress. So, for the safety and the comfort of your clients and the renters, I would like to have that addressed.
Okay, and I don't know, I don't know enough about that to be able to give you a definitive answer today. I can certainly bring it up with our clients, and we can talk to staff, the building department, about what that means and what those requirements are. I would suspect that the town doesn't do that. It would have to be a private company, I would think. What I can tell you is that we have a professional management company that manages this unit that provides all of the maintenance for everything within the project. And so, if anything like that were to come up, there would be a 24-hour number to contact. I think they're onsite during the day. I don't think they're onsite 24 hours a day, but they're available and accessible 24 hours a day, and that's pretty standard with all of these types of projects and all the ones that CAVEN is doing. So, there is an access or an emergency number for residents to contact the property management 24/7 for any of those kinds of things that might come up. I do know that's in place.
And maybe when the renters change over and you have new families moving in, maybe one of your walkthrough items is to show them where that turnoff switch is.
Yep. That's a good point.
Any other questions of the applicant?
I have a comment.
Okay.
And that is that, much as I don't like to delay the process, I wonder if our concerns are such that this would be better tabled for a month.
Right.
That's just a question I'm tossing out for consideration.
I can tell you that the developer is extremely anxious to get moving with construction. They've already got us directed to be developing the construction documents, and I would, I guess, urge not to do that if we can avoid it, just because I know that the timing, they have certain closing dates that they have to meet based on the seller's contract requirements. And so, by delaying the project, it's going to potentially impact their ability to close on the property, which they can't do without approvals. And so, there's some really sensitive timing issues that we've been working through that potentially make that really problematic for the developer.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, I just have one question. Looking at the town's map, there's a Malapai Road off of Market before you get to Great Western. Where is Malapai in relation to your entrance on Market Street?
I don't know where that road is. I don't see it on my map.
I would think that that would be kind of important if your entrance is a few feet off or 100 yards.
Are you saying it's immediately north on Market Street? I'm not seeing any road between Great Western and our western boundary to the north.
Ed, can you answer that?
Right here. It should be on their plan, they're working from. Malapai. M-A-L-A-P-A-I Drive. And it looks like it's a, I don't know.
I don't see that anywhere.
Take a look at Exhibit 2 on the vicinity map.
Yeah, it may not be on Google, but it was definitely on the maps that were given out to us in our packets.
In front of us. And that would affect your entrance also in the future.
It looks like it's kind of.
There it is. Okay, there it is.
Oh, that's the apartment complex, isn't it?
No.
Well, yeah, the road probably doesn't exist. No, no, it's the ring road going around the apartment. It's the apartment complex. Yeah, that's not anywhere near, I mean, that's spaced very far away from our road.
It is, okay.
Yeah, that's what I was thinking. The only road there is the apartment complex loop road.
Because ours is two different sizes. It's off.
Yeah, so, we're several hundred feet from that road.
Okay.
Basically, what's on this Exhibit 2 is wrong.
Okay.
Looks like an entrance drive or something.
Maybe it's their emergency exit.
Well, that's, well, it's a gated complex, so you go in, you can go in either entrance if I'm not mistaken.
It might be a dirt road. It could possibly be a dirt road.
It could be an emergency access only.
Any other questions of the applicant? All right, I'm going to bring it back to the commission.
I'd like to, Arda, I understand the talk of a 30-day delay, but I guess my question would be, I don't see, I mean, the handling of the entryway and everything meeting the town, is there something particular that you think can be handled or changed within 30 days that we don't have here?
Well, that's one of my concerns. Would it make any difference?
I just don't.
Other than inconveniencing or?
I think, I think there are several concerns, and I think that there have all been legitimate, but I don't think a 30-day period, unless we have something specific that has to be straightened out, I don't see where, from our standpoint, I mean, I know my concerns have to be handled through the town, the grading, how the entrance is going to be and where the final, and how the landscaping and the outer areas were my concern. But again, those aren't concerns for our board. Ours is just zoning and if we feel that it's correct or not. So, I'm not trying to talk down the 30-day.
No, no, I understand. There's no point in delaying if it's not going to change anything.
And we may vote for it or we may not, but.
I definitely feel that there are questions that need to be addressed and concerns that need to be addressed. You know, some of the questions that with, you know, maybe we look at, you know, we ask to see the final development plan before it goes to council, just so we can also see everything that you're talking about as well, just to make sure everything is covered.
It's my concern, even though it's a concern for me, it's not our final decision on how that is laid out.
Mr. Chair, if I may, we did agree to that on Prescott Valley Crossing, which is the other project that we designed. There was a couple of questions, and the commission wanted to review the final development plan for that project, and we're okay with that. We don't have any issues with that, because I know some of the improvement plan concerns will absolutely be fully addressed at that point, and we'd be happy to come back to the commission if that will help.
I definitely, you know, definitely think that would probably be helpful to see some of that for us, just because, you know, there are a few question marks out there that I think just need to be answered.
Understood, yeah, and we'd be supportive of that if that was a condition.
We will just have to add that basically as a stipulation that we will. We will just have to add that basically as a stipulation that we will see the final development plan. And that would be for, actually, the preliminary development plan on that particular motion. So, again, two separate motions, the, for the ask on the final, the final development plan, that would come under the preliminary development plan motion.
Clarification, and you'd like to make a recommendation on that final development plan to the city council?
What was that?
You'd like to make a recommendation to the city council, council?
Yes.
On the, on town council on the final development plan?
Yes, on the final development, that is correct. So, we'll get to there in just a sec. Any other questions of staff or any other comments? Seeing none, we'll go ahead with the first motion. Is there a motion to approve zoning map change 21-001, subject to the conditions listed in our packet?
I'll make that recommendation with the inclusion of the, I guess it would be number six, I don't see a number seven, so a number six that we get the opportunity to look at the final development.
Oh, and forgive me, I actually, I forgot about public hearing. Forgive me. I just, just was looking at it, my apologies. So, we'll hold off on that motion. Before we get to a motion, we'll open the floor to public comment. Is there anyone wishing to make a comment before the commission? Sir, come on up.
My name's J.T. Purvis. I own the six acres that adjoins this property that you're discussing today. And the purpose that I came today to find out a little more about this project, I have no knowledge or connection with this organization whatsoever. And I wanted to see what was developing since I have the six acres adjacent to the east. What I've seen looks to me like it's a very fair project. The other thing that I always look at as to what planning and zoning's purpose is, and I personally, as an adjoining property owner, would recommend that you approve this, because I think it's a benefit to the local community and to that area. Also, selfishly, it will benefit me, I think, next door as well. Not knowing what we want to do with that six acres. One of the questions I am going to discuss with the city is to where the utilities are coming from for this project. So, it's like Larry said, your job is to take care of approving the zoning. It's their job to take care of whether they meet codes and rules and regulations that other people say are adequate. So, they've been studied and approved for various reasons. So, once again, that's just my comment. I would recommend that you approve this. Thank you.
And thank you for coming out this evening. All right, with that, we'll bring it back to the commission. We do have a motion on the table by Commissioner, by Vice Chair Rankin to approve zoning map change 21-001 with the, subject to the conditions listed in our packet. Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
No.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
All right, going on to the action on preliminary development plan 21-002, is there a motion to approve PDP 21-002, subject to the conditions with the added condition, number six, that we would like to see the final development plan before it goes to council?
I'll again make that motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
It's been moved and seconded. Roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Rutherford?
Yes.
Commissioner Musara?
Yes.
Commissioner Roberts?
Yes.
Commissioner Griffiths?
No.
Commissioner Laney?
Yes.
Vice Chairperson Rankin?
Yes.
And Chairperson Zercher?
Yes. That being said, next item is item number nine, called a public consideration and discussion of comments from the public. Those wishing to address the planning and zoning commission need not request permission in advance. Action taken as a result of public comment will be limited to directing staff to study the matter or rescheduling the matter for further consideration and decision at a later date. Anyone wishing to address the commission? Seeing none, is there a motion to adjourn?
I agree, adjourn.
It's been moved. Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, stand adjourned. Thank you.